Direction, I want to call this workshop. That correct, regular meeting agenda item number two. Do you have a thought?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I've touched on over a packet and I'll look through each of the pages just so. The very first one was the original. The original is that we started the discussion about the proposed bond election. And then since then, made some adjustments and it's going to be, if you turn the page to really actually the third page that's on that one package. And so that was the updated list based on the original discussion. If you recall, there's some changes of that one, there is an increases of amounts. And so this is the, the, the second list from the second workshop that we had regarding that. Now, the, if we, if we look at, there were some, you know, for example, city hall was, was removed. We added, you know, for drainage improvement, we added additional funding and so forth. And so it amounted to 77.9 million. And on the second page, this is, uh, this is information that the, you know, the, the Baron I put together as a discussion on priority one, priority two, priority three, as far as projects and so forth. This is a breakdown of a potential distribution.
Just a little bit of the, the custom model. And everybody else, it is a priority one, a drainage schedule. We have formally already applied and under, we have already notified the Texas Water Development Board for a hundred million dollars either grant or hundred million dollars fifty fifty or a hundred million dollar loan. And, you know, no, no decisions were made, you know, as far as that's concerned. Once, once we get the, the, we wanted to get the Texas Water Development Board of that area and just FYI. And what we did, we submitted the, I get three million dollars of drainage to the pool to plan. Exactly, we submitted a hundred percent of all the, of all the projects. You could see how much they will help us to provision apart. Plus seven million dollars that we, that, that, that I added to a hundred million because and if we, if we get the, all those projects in place, that means that we're going to be dropping more into the Mission inlet and the north, south, north, north and south outlets for the Calum, sometimes known, fortunately known as the Pro Dayo Range. And, and, and basically based on, based on that, I really talked with Mayor, Mayor Darnett and the City of Calum, together with the City of Edinburg, we mentioned seven million, seven million and seven million. So we'll go to, to larger, to make it a large, larger, because we're going to be putting in more, more water into it as we develop. And, and Calum will be putting in more water and Edinburg will be putting more water in it. So we felt that that would be, okay, we'll operate, go ahead and continue friends.
Yes, sir, that's okay.
And so the last question is the final one?
Yes.
And what do we expect to hear from?
Well, we're, see, they're, they're receiving them right now and until they post that, then they'll, they'll, they're going to be ranked, ranked the project. And once we rank the project, then we know.
And it'd be a couple of months before any, any information is received.
But meanwhile, we are doing already the, 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 the base part for, for the, for the honesty with our, our.
So our one was one of the drainage projects that was identified, we had prepared plans for. It's in the, the tier area. And so we had submitted that through a grant, the grant didn't go through, but that was one of the drainage projects that was listed on the last drainage plan. And so we're going to go ahead and put it out for bids, ready, so we can start that. We're going to cover that for our drainage assessment fund that we have availability for. So we're going to go ahead and start that project because that, that area is, is one of the probable areas. And so we, we want to go ahead and get, get started.
And also another thing to, to let you on home is that we got a word from the federal government that 3.5 million are awarded for the drainage project that in our plan, that's in our plan, that connects with the children's. And, and, and see that what happened is the, the, the previous owners were supposed to do in order of their industrial park to the Mission outlet. And, and it never was done by, by the, the, one of the other guys from the, people from Dallas, you know. The Huns, yeah, the Huns from Dallas, they never was done. So we filed the, the grant, the federal and, 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 and been afforded. Basically, we're going to be doing some, 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 uh, deal with the jack and so, uh, in, in the next ten days, the next ten days. So, so, so those are three, two projects that we're going to, couldn't wait up. We, we went ahead and moved over. And of course, once we get the, the work from the Water Development, Texas Water Development Board, that's going to be, uh, hopefully. Uh, the reason why I, I went there around is because it'd be another day. I, I want to go ahead and look at, at the, the actual awards by the Texas Water Development Board for the last ten years for loans. And I put all the interest rates and I divided it by the number, you know, and got a mean score. And the, the mean score was 1.3% industry. So, 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 uh, having said that, that's why I told Randy, just send it out there, let's find out. And then, you know, worst case scenario, bring it to you and we say no. Right, worst case scenario, well, if you could get that big chunk of money into, into Mission from the state. And keep in mind, this is, this is a, a new, a new boy, a new birth in Texas. Of monies for flood, flood prevention and flood drainage. This is the first new board, that, that, that new birth because Texas Water Development Board was appointed by the, by the legislators as now the prevention officers. You know, the flood prevention officers as, as far as that's concerned. So, so they're, they're actually beginning to name an official board also, you know, as far as that's concerned, you know, so, so.
So then, sometime in time, we can meet back here.
Yes. But bring, bring it out another. Because if we, if we get it, that's going to be a great, a great position for, for this division. Go ahead, you're sorry.
Okay, so, so basically on the last, the last page, which is a legal size page. So we're the, uh, the, the latest projects that we had identified at the, at the last workshop. And so the purpose of this workshop was to look at the list and whether there was new projects that you already have that would add to the list or also recommendations from the list. Or so that way we can look at, at more of a closer estimated costs for these particular line items. Uh, these were just all part numbers that were just plugged in for, for presentation purposes at the time. But, uh, but the, but the intent is to go through these projects. If there's additional projects and there's projects that, uh, the Calum feels that, that are, are, uh, we, we take a different direction on. We can take those notes and then also prioritize some of these projects based on this list. Now, also tomorrow is, we'll go over the funding, available funding. How, what will we have for these particular projects? Uh, what, what we can work on? What we can work on, uh, on, on different options, uh, whether we go out for certificate obligations, we go out for a water development board loan, we go out for an actual bond election or also certificate obligation. So, so that's, that's the, uh, the idea of how to, you know, go about this, this workshop. Uh, to go down this, we can go down the list one by one and, and make a, make a, a direction as far as each of the line items. And then of course, if you have your own, um, projects that you would like to add as well. So then we can include them and then get a process estimate for those particular products.
So I'm, I'm just wondering, is, can you say what you're looking at? Your, your branch is the last page.
Yes.
And I'm going to look at the second page.
Okay.
With the, and, uh, the, I kind of like to see what we, what we could in the, the category of certificate of obligation.
Okay.
That means that we, we, you know, something we can't wait for.
Sure. Well, we, remember that we said that the drainage part was not included. We thought the drainage part was not included. So, so the drainage part, I, I think maybe you can sense it that that would be the number one thing, am I correct? Drainage part, Phillip, drainage.
But that, you're going to keep on this.
You got, it's a purpose for priority one. But, but, so, but, but it's, it, it, we, we, you know, we, we use the, the number 10 million in case we, we got a 75.5 max. Right? Or, 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 you know, so, so we're going to look, with 10 million, we locate it, spell it out.
Yes, okay. So then when we, when they go up to certificate of obligation, do we have to be specific on how they use them?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So, so, uh, so the way the law language should read is specifically. So we, we look at the overall intent of the certificate of obligation. Uh, and we, we have a law council for the language in that area. But, but to answer your question, yes, to a certain extent, you need to be specific on what the, the use of the funds are for. Uh, but not necessarily, you know, specific locations. I mean, we don't want to restrict ourselves to that. And so whether it's drainage improvements, we, we, the drainage improvements and now it's not specific to location or area.
Why don't, why don't we do this, this, just let me see if this, this will work. Why, why don't we do this, why don't we go like number one and just say, yes, certificate of obligation or no? And if it doesn't know if they're ready to put it down for, 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 for our agreement, okay? And, and, and we go, we go ahead and tomorrow, tomorrow when we have our financial advisor on, on, on view, we can ask the financial questions to see how much we can afford, how much we can, you know, you know, you understand?
Yeah, yeah, I, 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 I was just hoping for, for the best case scenario, if you do get that, that, that water is building more.
After we have one.
After we have one.
We have some assessments throughout the city. Yes, we do have a list.
What would that stand as a study?
Every year we can move sections of it.
How old is this study? Or how old is the management?
Isn't that a master plan? On a unit basis, we put them on the list so we can do our budget.
Basically, that's the implementation part, but we don't have a master plan improvement program the way we just did the trainings. They told us the whole city, what is needed for the whole city. Do we have one?
No, we don't, Mayor.
But that's what I'm asking. I mean, don't change what you're doing.
That's what we need.
Don't change what you're doing, but what I'm asking for is let's look at the whole city, you know? The whole city, because you're basing it on what's available for the budget. You know, what's available in the budget. And I'm saying, don't change that. Continue doing that. But we do the study for the whole city. You know, and then it's the way with the trainees. You know, it was easy. You've got all the projects and we put them in there for project purposes or check out also as we do the trainings. They will receive money and make it available, so. Okay.
Mayor, we have a, I think we have already a needs assessment contract with Ivy and Elsa. And I'm going to go up to you.
Who?
Ivy and Elsa.
We have a contract already?
Needs assessment. It is right in the road test here.
Just use that?
Well, I'll check it.
Yeah, I'll check with the school. Check to maybe you can do it on a way to do the.
Same thing, John. You know, we did Brian, but.
No, no one, no one was, because that one was going to be a project on its own.
Did we apply for the Army Corps of Engineers to do it for it?
We've opened up the accounts. We haven't moved forward with anything. They've been trying to reach out, but they haven't responded.
They haven't responded?
No, sir. But we haven't.
They probably be rerouted to different locations with COVID-19 and President Trump, you know? You know, they probably, because what we were trying to do, we were trying to get the Corps of Engineers that they offered to do for us all the way up to the payment. They would do everything all the way up to the payment. All we had to do was with, but it was, they would do it in two weeks. All we had to do was with the materials and supplies all the way up to the payment. They don't do payment, you know? But since we have payment already, you know, so we have in council papers already. So we figured that they can do all that to state level standards free, you know, and engineers that they will operate their own machines and implement and so forth. For them, it's a two-week drill, a two-week military drill. They did it for Cameron County at the time that I did the emergency testing of, in Clinton, that same brigade came down to Delaware County and Cameron County that did it for, through the last quarter of the winter. If we can, let's take advantage of that, you know? Because that's professional assistance at engineer levels and not after the city. It's expensive to do. Okay. Sorry about that. Sorry about the decisions. Is that priority three or priority two?
I mean, those have it now.
Okay, so we are together. City upgrading technology. You have questions? Go ahead.
Are we getting funding for those upgrades?
Yeah, so part of what we had originally planned for this particular item we are because we saw we're integrating the CARES Act funding with that because we saw the difficulty it was technology-wise during this COVID for remote work and then also communications as well. So we have to, part of this upgrade is included.
Let me add the, keep in mind, this list was pre-COVID-19. So what happens is if you don't mind, leave the item there and let's bring it down to one minute. Bring it down to one minute.
We have two minutes, but we also.
Yeah, let's do one minute. Good.
So, you know, we're doing the 18th assessment. They're going to make a presentation to the council on the 13th. I'm not sure if that will be part of the presentation or maybe a workshop before, but they're ready to make their presentation.
At least for 30 and 13, a workshop before. And then if we need to approve anything, we approve it at the regular deadline.
They'll be able to give us a clearer picture of what we stand on.
So right now, let's bring it to a million and who adjusted this after we did the data for the purposes of working today's detail. Other than that, okay? And but do put it on the 4:30, the workshop. And with 45 minutes, be okay for the presentation or you want to live it to 30?
Probably 30 minutes.
30 minutes? Okay, so they'll give us an opportunity. If we have another item before the city council, to submit 4:30 million workshop, they'll give us availability there. Yeah, so we may have 4:30. Then we'll go over the technology part on top. And if we need to adjust leftover money, the CARES Act, you know, we still, I don't know, we have a good empty amount coming in. If the heroes, if the heroes funding goes through to the Senate, we have a really nice empty amount coming directly to the city mission. Up through the community, we don't have to, you know, I make sure that I talk to many as I could from the legislators all the way to Nancy Pelosi herself, you know, to make sure that she doesn't put us in the same situation they put us with the CARES Act. You know, so I try to call as many as I could. So it worked because now it's coming directly to each city of the other county. Okay, and then so that acquisition, is that the term?
So, and if I may, we're, so, land acquisition, I'm tied into our street upgrade and improvements because we do have property out there that we can acquire for intention area or for grants purposes. So that's part of that acquisition for that purpose. And that's, to me, that's one of the, I have it tied into my priority list of grade and street improvements.
And then if we need to acquire for recycling center, you know, recycling centers. And really, really, another thing that I would like to do, like to do, and I don't know if you get. That three-story building, that same Texas facility, yes, man. No, but you know, the other, the other, I would like to be able to address also the issue is tire efficiency, you know, the issue of tires, you know. I mentioned right now, our policy doesn't allow for tires to be picked up. So it's something that we probably need to do a little different things as far as that. When we have the opportunity that we're going to have that company, that recycling company of tires, one of the things that we agree with them that we're going to do it in quarterly, quarterly, pick up the tires and supplement their, in the front lawn, you know? But I think if they came to mission, the one that was wanting to transfer from California to mission, and they were trying, they were trying to recycle to do road remodels. You know, and so, but it did, it did. It turned out we've lost, we've lost contact. We haven't lost the company, but we've lost contact with the people that we were dealing with. They got responding to our calls or. But that's an issue that we need to note down on the site. About tires, because I don't know, we've been doing with our existing station department that we have. But we have to work on that because I just, I just see them all over the place and I get calls every day getting pretty much, I don't, you know, pick them up. Back, now let's go to priority two. Or that is three? Well, I can change the three to two because we're combining one and two to one.
So that's pretty much, if you just apply. About 23 million dollars?
Yes.
23.5? Yes. 2 million dollars for land acquisition, 1 million dollars for technology, 2 million dollars for sidewalk, 7.5 for streets and then ending in all. We can get that just simply because of.
Yes, sir. The way it looks like, that would be a great number for us. Now, if you see anything on priority two that needs to move up, you know, feel free to share that, okay? Because the priority three, my recommendation was to put it on the bond issue for November and let the public tell us yes or no on all of these projects. You know, that's what I wanted to, that's what I wanted to do. And the public tells us no for the money, you know? You know, we just wait another three years every move after that, you know?
I personally don't want a bond election. I like priority one and two. I think it's the street, the sidewalk, the technology thing. And I think those things are very much necessary. Anything that we have right now in the power, it will be, sorry, we knew it. I don't think it's, especially right now with COVID, all of this going on and putting, making, allowing the public to make a decision about increasing taxes and whatnot. Personally, I don't think it's the right time to do it.
And I disagree with you, just that way, for the record, I disagree with you. I think that the public is the one that needs to make the decision whether we raise taxes or not. Private, before us, you know, I mean, we can present the tax rate as a council, but you know, I think that the public should have a direct input into saying yes or no to this product, that's my stance. Clear?
I actually would not want to see a bond, personal or monetary.
So how are we going to fund this? If, say first, let me give you a hypothetical thing, that tomorrow, our financial advisor says the maximum you can do without having to raise taxes, having to raise taxes is 33 million. If there's 23 million here, we already have 23 million up there. So what are you going to cut, you know?
Are these projects on priority two?
Yes.
Oh, I think that we need to, I mean, I think what we've done is prioritize the projects that absolutely need to be done, which is maybe by one and two, which I fully agree with. And these other projects, you know, they're, to me, they're, these are more like wish lists. You know, it's not, it's not absolutely necessary.
You don't think that there's absolutely necessary that Westside is to be done? Or a baseball park, the 3030 baseball park? You know, we need additional baseball parks because all the baseball parks that we used were maximum class.
Well, can we have a part, a need discussion for these items? Because I don't.
A part improvement, a part improvement, we already have a tenure plan, but we never funded the tenure plan. So what's the purpose of doing a tenure plan if you don't have a plan? You know, we already have a tenure plan for the park, am I correct? Mr. Brett, do you have a tenure plan with no funding for it? The master plan, right?
We do have a tenure plan, we're going to complete so far, I don't know.
But if we were to let the public vote on a bond issue in November, allowing you to have $7 million voted into your master plan.
So, but I mean, the last part that we did was the tennis, tennis, tennis center.
And we're doing the all the facilities we want to do.
And the tennis center was basically funded by other grants. So other grants, so that's a type of funding that I would like to see for, you know, most of these, because these have.
And part of the, like, the one is the relocation of animal shelters. You know, that, the pop of any, as, keep in mind that animal shelter was created there because we got land, land next to the, next to the, you know, the land was available and that was created there. Every time shots are fired in the, in the, in the sketchy section, those, I mean, the animals that are there are suffering because they're very sensitive to the invaders, you know? So that's why, that's my reason why we want to relocate it. And the intent, the intent is to relocate our station number two for exact, so we can be able to work with our station number two relocated to around the Madero area, you know, next to the San Francisco Salinas Park. The Philpines are working with us for a 10-acre extension of that park with the power and our station and police station there. And that's what we're looking at. And then taking that property there and the Joe Lopez Park, will be moved to 10 acres that are going to be next to, that causes a lot of us to have, and next to, next to the, 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 and we want to convert that into the Joe Lopez Veterans Park, you know, and give, and because we've found a lot of criticism from a lot of veterans that Joe Lopez was a Medal of Honor recipient and we have a very, pardon, I'll just call one individual, said, rickety park for honors and for an honors deal, you know? And the intent is to be able to do a more sophisticated type of a Veterans Park where the intent of the committee, the previous committee, and pretty soon we've asked an ordinance to establish a Veterans Committee for the city mission, which appointment will be coming up in July 13th. You know, is to do, is a Veterans Park there that's going to honor desert storm over one, over two, we have spaces, spaces out there. You know, and freedom, freedom, all the new, the new, besides Vietnam, except for Vietnam, except, you know?
Mayor, I have a question for Randy regarding slide. If we do a bond election, can we do it in the day of next year?
Yeah.
Or we study it more? Or we.
We would put this payment.
I mean, when we study the case more, what we, I mean, whether we like or not, it's right now, we have a facility that we cannot use as much. We have a horse club that we open it with limitations. So whether we like it or not, the COVID has changed a lot of lifestyle and it has made a big impact that we also need to consider that to make decisions. Whether we want to have right now a go-up or something that I hope it passes soon, but in the meantime, we need to use our present situation to be able to make decisions. And our business, our people that incurred with this COVID financially, they're putting in burden, and I understand that the public decides, but we also represent the public. And we, I don't think it's something that it benefits our brother kids, a consultant coming in trying and making all of us agree to it because personally, I would be campaigning against the process.
I agree with the study and the publication, like, at a later time, I don't want to.
Even if it costs us $40,000, but at least I feel like it was very well studied, analyzed and presented to us, training, I mean, you don't want to weigh up the streets. I mean, it comes all together. But I understand a facility.
So if that's the case, if that's the case, let's move some of this activity, some of this to, 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 we'll put up over it right now and wait till tomorrow and see how many of those we can move. We can move up to certificate application, not that I want to have a bond.
Maybe it's not like a, for example, in the park, that those are outdoor activities.
The park already has their master plan. It's just a matter of telling, Brett Man said, you have a million dollars to work in and you already guys work to spend, or two million, or one million, you know? You already guys, you already guys, he has already these consultants. All that you're talking about, you already guys play, except the funding. And that's what I wanted to do with the park improvement is to fund our master, after all we do, we say, we say, we say, we say, now it's time to do, do, do it, give him the, give him the budget that he needs to put to.
And I think, I mean, if we can all invest in the park this year and the following year, we do. I mean, this is kind of like a waste list, it's not really a priority, I think.
The relocation of the park, a park system, relocation of the power station in ours. And so is the relocation of the animal shelter. That's not a waste, the voice and growth club facility is not a waste list. The swimming pool facility, how long have we been talking about a building that's swimming pool on the West Side?
And I don't know if our.
That's up to. How long have we been talking about a building that's swimming pool on the West Side? You know, so the park improvement, they have their own plan, so.
But Mayor, let's just remind the council that today's workshop was about harder type. Tomorrow's workshop. Tomorrow's workshop, we have ten, that's the question, who is going to have a, tomorrow?
And we can, we can all discuss that we're having about the.
Yeah, sure, but we're getting a lot of planning for it, which is what we're going to do tomorrow.
So, so, Mayor?
What?
So, so the consensus, obviously, we look at, we look at the list of projects. And so tomorrow, I think, is a good indication where we show that the total number of the dollar amount and what the impact does for a certificate obligation. To me, in my opinion, that would determine the prioritize of the district. Here, we're looking at, just for discussion purposes, we're looking at 30 million, right? While those 30 million, we're going to look at, and I asked them to do an analysis on 30 million and analysis of 15 million, okay, what, what can, what project can we cover in the dollar amounts? And if it's 15 million to 30 million, what's the overall impact, right? Because it's going to have an impact on our, our maintenance rate, right? And so what's our capacity, how much can we borrow on a certificate obligation? To me, you know, whether we set the list of priorities of projects and then tomorrow, we determine the amount of, based on the priority list, that determine the amount of, okay, we're going to allocate this much for this, for credit, this much for street improvements, this much for, and then at the other, at the other priority two or priority three, or whatever it was before, I mean, that could be something in the future, future projects that we can definitely look at. But for now, we need to look at, because if we're going to do a bond issue so that way we can, you know, it's 30 to 45 days turnaround time on the actual process for bond issue.
I think it's a good consensus, it's not talking about the bond.
No, I'm sorry, that's a certificate obligation to issue bonds for that. And so that, I mean, going based on that, I think the perfect part is that, is that, you know, moving forward, prioritizing these and then see how much we are allocating for category to determine tomorrow is, you know, how much we should be going out for a certificate obligation.
So that financial consultant is going to be available tomorrow?
Yes, sir. It'll be available, the first part of the, for an hour from 8:30 to 9:30 to answer any questions, but I did ask for, for him to do an analysis on, on the different amounts that we left that, just so we can see the overall impact.
When we open tomorrow, when we open tomorrow, we're going to get him on the line first thing and he's going to give us an overview of the analysis and what we have as the premise so that we can make decisions, consensus decision tomorrow. And then for the agenda items, we'd like it to be processed. So we can, this project's moving, you know?
Can I get on this for all the certificates of certificate obligation that we have running?
Yes. Yeah, I can tell you this.
Yes.
The current list of.
The list of all the certificates.
Right now in place.
Yes, Chris. Because the last, the last one that we asked for was the 12 million.
The 12.5.
The 12.5 million.
How much do we have right now on project?
Total debt, we're, general obligation, we're looking at 30, 30 million, we saw total about 70 in the revenue bonds.
When I started, you had 100 million, over 100, so.
And I believe I just, I can ask you for the exact amount, I know that.
We'll wait, we'll wait until tomorrow, we'll wait until tomorrow, please.
We're getting now.
So, so, hold on, hold on to the.
I looked at the big camera.
Okay, so if you continue on with this, the lower part is that something that we already covered as far as the bond election.
Well, talking about the bottom part, we have to wait because the, yeah, because we have to wait on, on, on the bottom part, because the bottom part has to do with the climate, you know?
So I had prepared, you know, just the top, the top five priorities, you know, from my perspective, and I mean, it's very, it's very similar to priority one and two. Of course, I have drainage improvements as number one. And these are all combined, like I mentioned before. So my, my top five are drainage improvements, street improvements, land acquisitions, sidewalks, and city facility remodeling. I have a, it's a separate list I have.
Run it again, run it again. 再造 book.
Yes, drainage improvements.
But that won't be off the same.
Yes, land acquisition, yes, street improvements, sidewalks, and city facility remodeling. And there's quite a few facilities that need, not necessarily remodeling, but a perfect example is the roof here, City Hall is to be redone. There's the, the future plans, we had a remodeling of the facilities, department, health department, the, we're already doing the library and museum with that last bond issue, the building over, over Conway. Of course, we're looking at the Head Start Building, the old Heart Start Building. So there's, there's a number of buildings that are needing upgrades. I know parks, their roof is also in bad shape over at the old, the old Arpring. Several, several, we're doing minor improvements in the building, within the buildings. PD's doing their old improvements that need to be done. Perfect example is this carpet. I mean, this building's, you know, we've been here quite some time now. We have the same, so a little closer.
One of the reasons why I asked for a city, a new city called La Jolla Center, you know, because we're going to put all the investments and so forth, the elbow space, the growth, growth of the departments, because our departments are growing and so forth. Because I don't, I, there's a lot of, a lot of space here that would not be utilized or, or, or else. And so that's why I wanted to, but the first big fact that I got was that it'll be a new city called. But, you know.
So the fact that I have here is the 2018, the month, the month that we heard it on the second. So basically, the, this is how the language was on the first one, that the second page is the, the actual balance that we have, and our own internal budget that we had created, uh, for the twenty eighteen bond, uh, let's come in the, the CO. And so from that current bond, we have approximately about eight point two million, uh, that, and include the five million for the engineers, for the bridge. So that's, uh, that's what that is, and the third page is the actual priority that I'll be regarding that. If, just on the first top six, you're, you're looking at about thirty, thirty to thirty-four million, assuming that, that those amounts stay, stay the same, right? Uh, of course, that's, uh, based on, on the capacity that we, we would have, we'll, we'll listen to that tomorrow with our financial advisor. But, uh, but to, whether we reallocate some of those, some of those numbers, so we can determine what the, what the overall priority is, uh, for, for these projects. But the, every, every year, uh, and like JP was mentioning on the streets, uh, improvement, every year, we would, uh, we put together, uh, streets, prioritize streets that are being right now, uh, you know, we, we allocate about five hundred thousand a year for that, and it's, you know, it's minimal because of, because of, I mean, any section of roadway is, is, is costly and so. Uh, but if we do our own overlays and so forth, and that's why, uh, the street, the street improvement amount is very, uh, it, it goes hand in hand with drainage and sidewalks, because there's a lot of sidewalks out there that, that need to be redone. And so that's, that's, uh, we started doing them in-house, uh, prior to the COVID, uh, to where we're, we're trying to, uh, bridge the gaps where there's sidewalks missing, and so we, we're doing that in-house, however, it, it takes some time, uh, to, to get it done, because it's all, we, we do it from, you know, we do the whole work in-house, so. That's, that, that would definitely be a major improvement if we do the, the drainage streets and sidewalks, along with the, with the overall improvements throughout.
We need the wire as best.
Well, first, we have to, can I, can I have a motion, Mr.?
I want to determine.
Like, I can, uh, all, all of the parents say I, I, all of the post-ice sign motions, care.